Good evening. We are calling the July 22, 2025 Town Council Special Meeting Agenda to Order. It is 6:30 PM. Mr. Burt, are you taking the place of the Town Clerk this evening?
I am.
Would you like to do the roll call?
Councilor Bordaline not here as of yet. Councilor Good?
Here.
Councilor Jones, excused absence, I believe.
Yes, he was unable to attend this evening.
Councilor McBride?
Here.
Councilor Merritt?
Here.
Councilor Parker?
Here.
Councilor Pacino?
Here.
Councilor Rusk?
Here.
And Mayor Franco?
I am here. Okay. We are now moving on to the public hearing. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, people were supposed to have emailed the council at Groton-CT.gov by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. If you plan to speak in person, you may sign up on the meeting sheet that's in front to speak on the design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields Public Hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to sign up for the public hearing on athletic fields?
I have a question. Is this only about the athletic field or about other items?
The public hearing right now is about athletic fields.
But I heard there were two meetings. We may be in the wrong line. Is there another meeting taking place simultaneously?
There will be another meeting right after this. There is not...
Is there any general public comment?
No.
Is there any public comment at this public meeting?
Just the public hearing. Thank you. Mr. Burt, would you like to read the ordinance as proposed?
Certainly. Town of Groton Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town Council of the Town of Groton, Connecticut on Tuesday, July 22, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the Council Chambers Town Hall, Groton, Connecticut, on the ordinance introduced at the Town Council meeting held July 1, 2025 entitled, "Ordinance Appropriating $14,380,000 for the Design and Construction of Groton Athletic Fields, Consisting of Athletic Field Improvements at Fitch High School, Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School, and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds and Notes in the Same Amount to Finance Said Appropriation." The full text of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and available for public inspection and distribution. The following is a summary of the ordinance as approved by the Town Attorney. In accordance with Section 5.5.3 of the Town Charter, the proposed ordinance will, one, appropriate $14,380,000 costs related to design and construction of athletic field improvements at Fitch High School, Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School, the project. The appropriation may be spent for design and construction costs, demolition, removal of prior material costs, materials, equipment, lighting, installation costs, related site improvements, including parking, road and sidewalk improvements, architects' fees, engineering fees, construction manager fees, legal fees, net interest on borrowings and other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project or its financing. The Town Council may reduce or modify the project and may delete portions of the project if funds are insufficient to complete the entire project. Two, authorize the town to issue bonds, notes, and temporary notes in an amount not to exceed $14,380,000. To finance the appropriation for the project, authorize the Town Manager and the Director of Finance to determine the amount of bonds, notes to be sold, and the amount of any temporary notes to be sold. Authorize the Town Manager and the Director of Finance to make various determinations and designations, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds, notes, and temporary notes, and make certain declarations and authorizations related to the issuance of the bonds, notes, and temporary notes in a form qualifying for the exemption of interest thereon from federal income taxation and related to compliance with securities laws. Three, provide the ordinance shall become effective only if it has been adopted by vote of not less than five members of the Town Council and by the representative town meeting, approved by the voters at referendum in accordance with Section 5.5.5.1 and 9.13 of the Town Charter, and a notice of passage published in accordance with the provisions of the Town Charter. The foregoing summary is prepared for the benefit of the public solely for purposes of information, summarization, and explanation. The summary does not represent the intent of the Town Council of the Town of Groton for any purpose. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this 14th day of July 2025, Marisol Melendez, Groton Town Clerk. And before we open, I just wanted to mention a potential change that may be discussed tonight on the language. There's a potential of change for two items within the ordinance that may be discussed by the Council later in the COW. One is changing the title, and the intent is just to, the intent of the change is to clarify the intent of the ordinance. There's no actual change in intent. The title would potentially change to read, "Ordinance Appropriating $14,380,000 for the Design and Construction of Groton Athletic Fields, Consisting of Athletic Field Improvements Primarily at Fitch High School, and if funds are remaining from said appropriation, allow such funds to be used at Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School, and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds and Notes in the Same Amount to Finance Said Appropriation." So making, that's the change of the title, making it clear first that the high school is the focus, and then if that gets done, funds will be spent somewhere else. The other change to reflect that same change in title would be under Section 1. Section 1 would read, "Section 1, that the sum of $14,380,000 is appropriated for costs related to design and construction of athletic field improvements primarily at Fitch High School, and if funds are remaining from said appropriation, allow such funds to be used at Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School." And I did speak with our bond counsel to make sure that that would not be an issue. He said it would not be because the intent is not changing. You know, for clarification purposes, I support the change.
Great. Thank you very much. Up first, we have Lauren Gothier. Please state your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
My name is Lauren Gothier, 31 Boards and Road, Groton. Good evening, members of the Council. I would recommend removing Claude Chester Elementary School from this planned project and ordinance, since the inclusion of Claude Chester does not align with previous comments by Mayor Franco, Councilor Rusk, and other Town Councilors, expressed that all of the closed school properties need to be returned to the tax rolls and should be developed into housing. This is what was expressed as the reasoning for turning the Pleasant Valley Elementary School into a high-density housing complex, which, like Claude Chester, is mostly level, has access to public water and sewer, and is located in a highly-trafficked area of town. Unlike Pleasant Valley, which is in an area of town with a significant, pointed, and apparent perpetual lack of fields and other recreation parks, Claude Chester is already surrounded by a plethora of fields and active recreation areas, such as those at the library adjacent to the property, Aquanic Plains Park directly adjacent to the property, pocket playgrounds throughout the nearby neighborhoods, and Sutton Park. Both Claude Chester's accessibility to public water, sewer, and highly-trafficked roads in a central part of town, combined with existing recreation and other accommodations, would make Claude Chester just as much, if not more, of a prime location for several hundred units to be built to meet what the Council finds is an absolute crisis of housing stock in this town. Furthermore, I do not believe, and I could be wrong, but that Claude Chester Elementary School went through the town-owned property evaluation committee and public hearing process prior to being selected as part of this larger athletic fields complex. I'd like to understand why there's a disparity in the treatment for these two neighborhood schools. Pleasant Valley, obviously, receiving that top hearing, and Claude Chester, I could not find any record of receiving one. The Town Council should rectify this inconsistency as well before barreling forward with the proposed ordinance as written. Continuing with Claude Chester as part of this bond package will significantly increase the town's debt liability, as well as remove a highly valuable property from the tax rolls forever, and would be hypocritical to this Council's espoused beliefs and their very recent actions. This Council should put Claude Chester Elementary out for RFP to develop housing, or the Town Council should make their actions consistent and reconsider their vote to turn Pleasant Valley into a high-density housing complex in a neighborhood that does not have any fields or major parks, and consider potentially even adding Pleasant Valley to this athletic fields complex project as an additional or alternative to meet the town's desire for more athletic fields, or turn it into the neighborhood park that is so desperately needed and so very many people have been insisting on for so very long. Counselors, whatever you decide to do, at least be consistent and be honest about why you're doing what you're doing, and take action to become consistent, to prove your leadership, and earn the votes that you want or expect from Groton residents this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, David Franco.
Is it okay if I put my microphone here? Hi. My name's Dave Franco. Do I have to be here?
Yeah.
I can't walk around.
Stand at the podium, please.
I can't walk around. Top-sail lane. Mystic. I'm here to talk about the bond ordinance for design and construction Groton Athletic Fields. I think it's long overdue. I'm well for it. I think what you guys have done is amazing, and I think what we're looking at for Groton in the future is going to be unbelievable for the kids and for the parents as well. So I'm all for it. I'm not for the housing. I'm not for any of that other stuff. Whatever you guys are doing, it's awesome, and I don't need five minutes of your time, so we're just going to move on from that. But, yep, for whatever it is, for whatever I'm worth, it's going to be an amazing field for all the kids in Groton. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next, Mila Doyle. Oh, I'm sorry. Mike, sorry about that.
Hi, Mike Doyle, 15 Elm Street, Groton, Noank. A parent of Groton School alumni, starting at Noank School, past assistant lacrosse coach at Fitch, and current NFA Boys Lacrosse Assistant Coach there. I'm fully endorsed the four-phase, $14 million price for the first phase. Strong endorse field turf at the football stadium, and if the side fields are also in this first phase, field turf there. Also, the Claude Chester field should have designed for, not in this first phase, probably, definitely not in the first phase, but one of those fields should be a field turf for the use of football and soccer club use, and girls' and boys' lacrosse as well. And the four-phase approach, the $14 million for the first one is a great way to go at it. We'll get this going there. Hopefully, we can get some money to get the field house put together. My daughter was on the track team, and there was no place for the girls to use, and the visiting locker room, quote-unquote locker room, for the boys' football team is abominable. And it'd be great to see the concession stand back in better shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have anybody that signed up by 4 o'clock online?
We did not. I do see a hand for Ian Thomas, though I wondered if it was for this purpose or maybe Councilor Bordaline. Would you like me to allow her to speak?
Yeah, it's actually me, Councilor Bordaline, using his computer. Mine is not working. I've been here since the beginning of the meeting, but was not recognized. I was messaging John, the Town Manager, to promote me.
Okay. I will mark that you are now present. Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak on the public hearing for athletic fields? Okay. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing on athletic fields. It is 6:44.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Councilor Bordaline, I did not hear your vote.
Yeah, I'm in favor. I'm just trying to get my computer working, thanks.
Thank you. That passes eight to zero to zero. All right. It is 6:44, and it is July 22, 2025, and we are calling the Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting to Order. All right. All are present except for Councilor Jones, who, as noted, is unable to attend this evening. Calendar and Communications. Councilor Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share?
Not right now.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Bordaline, do you have anything you would like to share?
I'm trying to get on my own computer. Can you skip me for now, please? Thanks.
Mayor, please speak.
Yeah.
Just a comment to Councilor Bordaline. I've not received any messages. You may want to check where you're sending any messages to. Maybe try email otherwise.
Thank you. Councilor Pacino.
I have nothing best today.
Thank you. Councilor Rusk?
I received all the same emails that everyone else has received. I wanted to address something that was stated during the public hearing that I made a statement. I don't believe I've ever made that statement, but if I did, I would love to know when. And thank you to everyone who helped make the fireworks be a success this last weekend.
All right. Thank you. Councilor McBride?
The normal communications on the matters that are pertaining to Groton that all the councils have received. The only individual item that I received is I did speak to a resident regarding a desire to set up a long-term financial committee to review the long-term projections of the town, and I did mention to them that that is on the strategic list or the referral list, that I have it labeled as a long-term cash flow planning, but it's the same concept of setting up a committee to discuss the long-term outlook of the town. But other than that, just the normal communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Good?
I received all the same emails, also attended the fireworks. Very interesting fireworks this year, but they were still a lot of fun, and I appreciate the City of Groton and the Town of Groton for putting them on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Same communications and nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it short as well. Same communications that the Council has received as well, and any that the Council did not receive, I forwarded off to Mr. Burt as the Town Manager. On to approval of minutes. 2025-674, July 8, 2025 minutes. Councilor Parker, would you like to take that one?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes of July 8, 2025. I so moved.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Rusk. Do we have any...
I'm having a technical difficulty. I just logged into my device. Can you accept me, Town Manager, so I can log off of this one?
Is there anybody that has any comments on the minutes from the July 8 meeting? Any Is Councilor Bordaline on now?
Yes.
All right. I'm not seeing any hands. We'll take a vote on 2025-674, July 8, 2025 minutes. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm opposed.
Okay. That passes seven to one to zero, with Bordaline opposed. Up next is 2024-574-3517-529, Gold Star Highway Properties Extension Request. This in our packet is on page nine. Councilor Good, would you like to take that one?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-574-517-529, Gold Star Highway Properties Extension Request. To recommend a resolution to approve the six-month extension request for the option to purchase agreement, and to authorize the Town Manager to sign all applicable documents and agreements to finalize said request.
Moved by Good, seconded by Rusk. Okay. Good evening. We have a presentation for us this evening.
Yes. Thank you so much. Burt is pulling that up. I'm Krim Piazza, Economic and Community Development Manager.
I'm David Orr with Orr Partners.
I just have, oh, there we go. I just have a very brief presentation for you, just four quick slides to provide you the background of the project as a refresher to you, as you haven't seen this since June of last year. And then David is here with Orr Partners to jump into their request for the six-month extension and answer any questions about the project, the timeline, and their requests overall. And the requested action of Town Council this evening is to review and approve that final six-month extension request. Next slide, please. One more. Thank you. So this is just the overall project concept, and essentially, this project was, is going to be a new apartment community that contributes to the town's goal of new units, 6,400 roughly, with about 395 new units. And this project is a partnership that helps us leverage our parcels with those of our partner. And in this map, you can see essentially, the orange parcels are what the town owns at about 11.75 acres, and with this partnership, we're allowed to put them together with the blue parcels next to it, about 5.91 acres, for a much more advantageous assembly of land, so we can have a more impactful project. The project also has off-street parking and resident amenities. It has the 20% retained land in its natural state per the zoning requirement, and the structures, as you saw the last time this was before you in June, are intentionally set back from the land preserve and include a proposed trail connection to the trail system within Avalonia Land Conservancy land. Next slide, please. All right. This timeline's in your packet, so available to the public as well in the agenda packet, so we won't go step by step, but it was created to provide just an easier, you know, step-by-step following through the stages that this project has gone through. And our focus this evening is, of course, in the green at the end there, where we're asking for the six-month extension to finalize that project and then move into groundbreaking and construction in spring of 2026. Next slide, please. All right. So for the project update, the last time you saw this, you approved PJNA, our partners' assignment of Orr Partners as the development team, the concept plan update, just to accommodate staff's recommendations, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations for the site plan, and you approved a 10-month extension for the project as it moved through permitting. And since last June, the project has received its site plan approval from the Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. It's begun additional permitting to the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, and the development team this evening will go over that project update and any progress, questions that you have, and the reasoning for the extension, and where it gets us. All right. And next slide, again, it's just that request for review and approval of the final six-month extension. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer those, and in particular, the Orr team. And if you can leave that open, just in case we need any of the slides. Thank you.
I'm not going to be able to see if Councilor Bordaline has her hand up. Mr. Burt, would you watch that?
I can see my laptop.
Is there anybody here that has any questions or comments? Councilor McBride?
Yeah, just a comment. I'm in favor of this because I think we all want this to be developed. My only comment would be, hopefully, this moves forward quickly and it's completed because, as we discussed, I think, a year ago, I had concerns over the purchase price because it was at 228, which was in, I think, 2016 or so. That purchase price is obviously elevated quite substantially in nine years, so it's a great deal for you, and it should be a great deal for you, but I just want to make sure, you know, you're going to move forward with this because I know myself, if this comes back, if I'm here, I'm not even sure if I'll be here, but if I was to be here, I would question whether or not that purchase price should be increased because it's been such a long period of time. So I wish it all the project. I hope it moves forward, but I just think it needs to continue to move forward, so.
Yeah. So if I may, first of all, good evening, and thank you for your service to the community. I will tell you, as I travel across the United States, building was built in 32 states now, we've never had a better reception than we have here in Groton. Deb Jones and John Rarner, the people, have been very, very good to work with, and I want you to know that. Some of the best. So, that being said, so our plans, we've been earnestly pursuing the plans. They'll be done at the end of October, Councilor McBride, at which time we will bid them. And one of the reasons for the extension is that we can't get, secure our final financing until we have a guaranteed maximum price on the project from a contractor. A project of this scale, and this is a $100 million project, requires that. There's just no way we'll get financing without it. So that's really the biggest thing. That and OSTA. We filed immediately with OSTA in March. We've already had comments. Our second submission is being submitted to them. So it's our intention to complete the plans and break ground at the beginning of next year, first quarter of next year. We're full steam ahead with this. I will tell you that we had some involvement, some oversight on the Trident Square Project. I don't know if you've heard, but the leasing there is going phenomenally well. Over 100 units at this point. Only been open for three or four months. So the demand is there, and, you know, we're starting to see these units to serve the community. So thank you.
Councilor Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just repeat when you're hoping to break ground?
First quarter of next year.
First quarter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Soon as the ground is thawed enough, we'll start digging.
Councilor Bordaline?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for choosing Groton. I know there are some concerns, you know, about timelines. Unfortunately, there have been some delays on projects in the past, and there's been some criticism because of that, and then some of them don't come to fruition. So I just, you know, with these extensions, hope that, you know, it's not going to change the tapestry of the big goal or plan. But also, I can share my concerns with Councilor McBride's comments on the purchase price nine years ago versus now. Is that being taken into consideration at all? I mean, because, I mean, we're all, you guys are providing housing, which, you know, provides a service, but we are also, you know, nine years later, you know, we're still at a lower cost of what the selling price is. So I guess through the mayor and the Town Manager, I'm just curious as to what that looks like when you see these types of delays.
One thing I'll mention, this is a very complicated project. It involves not just our land, so our prospects are limited. We have an agreement in place that calls for the sale price, so unless we're ready to... to restart the whole thing over again, that's the sale price.
And commensurably as well, the construction costs have gone up so much since then, I think if we were to break it down, over a hundred million in investment is still pretty extensive in comparison, and so a lot has changed, including how expensive the project is overall since then.
Two things have dramatically affected the development industry. Increases in hard costs, largely due to the breakdown of the supply chain from COVID and interest rates. And we're able to overcome those now, honestly. And it's with good pricing on the land, to be brutally honest with you.
Council Boardaline, do you have anything else you would like to?
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. I guess, you know, it's the questions we have to ask as we're representing the community, and these are the questions that we get. Why isn't it started? Why all the delays? You know, so it's just important to put it all out there. And what is the plan if, you know, we hit another wall? Will there be another extension? Or like, how, what is, how many extensions does this contract afford?
We're not seeking any more extensions. Our plan is to move full steam ahead. What we can't predict, Council, is something that we don't control, like ASTA and ASTA's approval. We're on our second submission with ASTA. We think that we'll get our approval in the late fall. It's been about, it's about an eight-month cycle for them. So that would be, you know, the things that we can control, like getting the plans done and getting the bids done, that we won't need an extension for. But if there was any need for any other extension, and we believe that we've, with this six-month, this six-month extension, Council, that we've built in adequate contingency time so we don't have to come back before you again.
Great, thank you for your answers, and appreciate your time in clarifying, you know, the questions that, things that were brought to my attention, and so far as how extensions work and concerns for past projects that had extensions that never came to fruition. So thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
All right, I don't see any other hands, so we're going to take a vote on the two zero two four dash five seven four dash three, five one seven to five two nine, Gold Star Highway Properties Extension Request. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Council Boardaline, your vote?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. That passes eight to zero to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to welcoming you to the groundbreaking.
That would be wonderful. We appreciate that. Up next is two zero two five dash six seven one, Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, FY twenty-six, in our packet. This is on page fifty-four. All right, up next is Council McBride. Would you like to take that one?
Sure, thank you. Item number two zero two five six seventy-one, Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Like to make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager or his designee to execute any and all documents and to perform all acts deemed necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of the grant program, to accept the grant funding in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and refer to the RTM per Rule six point five point three.
Second, Parker. Moved by McBride, seconded by Parker. Mr. Bert, are you going to speak on this?
Yeah, I'll cover it. This is an annual grant that we regularly receive. We apply for it in advance for what our usage for the funds would be. This year, for the hundred thousand, forty-eight thousand for salary reimbursements, and fifty-two thousand for emergency operations center upgrades. The upgrades include replacing antiquated electronics, the, for example, VHS recorders still in the EOC with touch, with large touchscreen TV, news monitors, new dispatch screens, and tools for greater visibility, central awareness, for instance, occurring throughout the town. There'll also be a mirrored screen installed in dispatch so they have eyes on what's going on down in the EOC. So EOC is our emergency operations center where there's a large-scale event, so make sure we're prepared for that. VHS is not the latest technology.
Do we have anybody that would like to comment on this? Council Rusk?
Just one quick clarification question. The forty-eight thousand dollars, is that in the budget, or is that in addition to the budget?
That, that'll, that's not in addition to our budget, that'll supplement the budget.
Okay.
No new, no increases for any staff involved.
Okay, I don't see any hands, so we'll take a vote on two zero two five dash six seven one, Nuclear Safety Emergency Performance Grant, FY twenty-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Council Boardaline, can you repeat your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Up next, two zero two five dash six eight six, Surviving Spouse Property Tax Exemption. This is in our packet on page fifty-seven. On this topic, I will be recusing myself, as my mother is actually one of the six members that are up for discussion this evening. So with that being said, we need to put in a pro tem at this moment to run the meeting while I am recused. I open it up for nominations.
Nominate Council Rusk?
Second. All right, nominated, Council Rusk. Are there any more nominations? All right, I will close the nominations, and we will vote on Council Rusk being the pro tem for this item. Council Boardaline, your vote?
Abstained.
Councilor Good?
Aye.
Council McBride?
Yes.
Council Merritt?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Pacino?
Yes.
Council Rusk?
Yes.
That is six in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention. Boardaline. Okay, so I am going to vacate the seat. And... Please let me know after this item is over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Council Pacino, will you read the motion, please?
Item two thousand twenty-five, six eighty-six, Surviving Spouse Property Tax Exemption. Motion to recommend a resolution approving the local option to allow a property tax exemption, starting with the two thousand twenty-five grand list for eligible surviving spouses of veterans, per Public Act twenty-five, Tac one six eight. I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Pacino, seconded by Good. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Good evening. Dee Morrison, Director of Finance, and tonight I have with me Mary Gardner, the town assessor.
Thank you. Do you want to give us an overview?
Sure. So in the end of June, Governor Lamont signed Public Act twenty-five dash one sixty-eight, which covered a number of items. The one we are bringing to you tonight is just pertaining to the Surviving Spouse Property Tax Exemption. There was some additional language in there that allows for eligibility for different criteria based on the October first, two thousand twenty-four death date. So we are bringing to you this, this option to see, because it's a local option to elect to exercise this. And if so elected, it would affect about a half a dozen individuals, surviving spouses in the town.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Council McBride?
Yeah, I have a question or comment. I'm in favor of this, however, I would like to discuss a potential modification. And my reasoning is, I think the six are, you know, more comfortable with that. My question or concern is that, do we open ourselves up to other residents coming into the town and, let's just say, buying a million-dollar house and us losing the property tax from that? So my concern is, is there a way we can limit this? I spoke to town manager Bert about that. Is there a way we can limit or put a cap on it, or some type of limitation on this in any way? Is there any, I know there's some information that I think was presented by you, Mary, I wonder if you can provide some clarification on how this would work? The eighty percent, I think it was.
Well, there are other options in this new legislation, and one was to limit the assessment exemption to the median overall assessment. And then there's another one where you can increase the exemption to allow for a land exemption, but I, it's difficult for me to think about, we already have about eighty veterans that are receiving this exemption. This is just to expand it because when the legislation was put into effect, it created two classes of veteran widows, some that received the exemption just by the date of the death of the veteran, and then this group that were excluded. So any change that you limit, it would be difficult, I think, for my office to kind of administer limiting it to this one group, but not the other group. That's the kind of administrative process that can really bog down what we do. So I think tonight, we were just going to try to focus on this. I think we were planning on coming back at a later date to talk about the other local options that are allowed under the statute. I don't know if that answered your question or made you more confused.
I guess I'm just trying to look at, how do we put a cap on it? Because we can't exclude other individuals from coming to town and realizing this benefit. That's my concern, is the potential, I mean, here we are, looking at ways to save money and worried about the federal government, and here we are, you know, providing, I know it's not substantial, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, but I'm concerned about the risk of it growing over time with providing the benefits to others. So I didn't know if there was a way we could put a cap or a percentage on minimizing that total amount to some percentage amount.
The statute that was adopted does give the town the authority to limit any of these benefits, not just to the widows, but the other eighty, to a median assessment, whatever the overall town median assessment is for that year. But I don't believe you can limit the number of people that are going to apply for this type of a program.
Understood. No, I'm thinking of the eighty percent limit, or whatever the ratio is, you could limit it that way. I guess I'm, I'm good for now. I'll think about this further. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Pacino?
So is the median on the board right now? Are we just, are we going to?
I don't think so. I think tonight's referral is just to whether or not the town would like to expand the widow's exemption to widows whose veteran spouses died before October first of two thousand twenty-four, because that's the limit right now.
And then we can discuss the limitations at a later date?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Bert?
Yeah, I was just going to basically reiterate the same thing, that what's on the agenda is solely on this option, there'll be other options, there's several options to be brought. And I do agree with the assessor that if the, I think it's good to have a cap, the median assessment cap, but should probably apply to not only these, but to the earlier people affected too. So it will be brought back to the council soon.
Argument accepted. Council Pacino?
I'm upset, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Council Boardaline?
Um, yeah, I just had a question. How does this relate to the letter we received from a constituent, Doris Blasky and her neighbor, Mary Gardner? Those veteran taxes, how does that relate to this?
Can you remind me what Doris's letter said?
John, do you have it?
I'm looking for it.
I can blow it up there.
It's the trust agreement, so this is a different thing.
Yeah, this is a totally different thing, Council Boardaline.
So could you just explain, because that one said veteran in there? I just wanted, like, are any of those, like, I'm trying, there's a lot to look at, right? So are those folks also part of this as well? Are they one of the same, or some in both categories? That's what I'm trying to ask, because that letter was really concerning that we received.
That's not part of this law in any capacity.
Okay, so that's a whole different story.
That's a whole different thing.
So, Council Boardaline, we should probably address that at another time instead of tonight with this. Definitely something that can be discussed, but not in this situation.
So my question was simply asking to, for clarifying and understanding this thing before. I think when one discusses things sometimes, it's good to bring all, what programs veterans have for tax relief, so that we can see. Looking at a narrow scope review limits one's ability to be able to effectively gauge how we are propelling as a town. So that's why I was asking, it would be great. When I looked at these in other areas, there was a grid that towns had where it had all the veteran benefits that were currently in effect, and how they were being applied, and how it would affect. So that's, you know, just a thought, but...
I'm sorry, could you just, for clarification, can you repeat what you said? There's a grid? Is that what you said?
Or you could provide a grid. So I'm looking for knowledge, right? When you vote on something, you don't want to vote on something narrowly. You want to look at the whole picture of how the town's performing and what benefits. So then we got that letter about another veteran's taxes and a notice that they were no longer going to be exempting them, and I'm just curious how this all looks. This is one thing that's come up, but usually, you can talk about all of the veteran things under the same umbrella at the same time, so that we can have an understanding of how many, what other ones are out there, how does this affect? Like, and it just, this is a very narrow scope for me to make a decision.
Okay, hold on one second. Mr. Bert, go ahead.
I was just going to mention on that other issue, while the council could certainly learn about it, I don't believe they have the authority to make a change on that. But certainly, it could be, you know, relate to at some point.
So I guess the question was, it is a military benefit, it's not something that we can control, and it doesn't have...
The trust is not a local option type thing.
Okay, so it's not something that the council has an option to change?
Correct.
And does it affect surviving spouses?
Not at this point.
No.
No, okay.
No, these total, two different programs altogether.
Okay.
I guess for me, it would be nice if you could send out a list of all the programs with tax exemptions. I'll send it, I'll follow it up with an email for me. I may be an abstention tonight for lack of knowledge and information. I was doing a lot of research with other towns, and I was able to find all these programs all delineated out, and the public could see, you know, how many people were exercising their right to each program. And I just had trouble navigating it on our own personal website. And this might be what we're talking about, but as a example, it would be good to know all the other programs that are affecting veterans in our town when we're speaking about one other program. So for me, I'll listen more to the conversation. Huge supporter of military veterans, especially disabled and widowed, but I definitely want to understand what this looks like and get a better understanding of the other programs that link separately that others could apply for. So, thank you.
Mr. Bert, is that something that can be sent out? A list of, of veteran tax exemptions?
Certainly. In terms of putting numbers of who's doing what, it might take a little time. We might present it with, when we come back in a couple of weeks, within the next few weeks, with the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Council McBride?
Thanks, just one last comment. Again, I'm in full support of this. As I mentioned before, my concern is, if we look at this list, there's one individual that's, and I don't know who the individual is, but there's one individual that is saving eighty-nine hundred dollars. To me, that's a substantial sum of money that they're not paying. So I think, I look forward to, as Tom Andrew Bert said, possibly looking at, you know, making this median assessment going forward with these programs, because I think these individuals do receive a benefit. But I think at some point, when you're talking about eighty-nine hundred dollars of property taxes, I think it's a little excessive where, you know, that's a pretty substantial house. So I'm in, I'm in support of it, but I hope the council will consider the median assessment going forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that will be on a very soon upcoming agenda, within the next two cows, certainly. You know, at this point, it's more of an equity issue to allow these six to join the eighty, and then we'll look at them as a group in the other option.
Council Boardaline?
Thank you. I'm not sure how I feel about the whole median breakdown. Again, I just want to look at the big picture. I can, I can, you know, understand Council McBride's stance on it. My concern is, you know, nobody's fighting to be in this category, let's just face that. Like, I'll just put that out there. If one is to fall into this category, and it's a pretty extreme situation to get here, and nobody really wants to be there, so this is... So this is not a large percent of our community. Therefore, you know, we are the submarine capital of the world, and we do have a lot of veterans who decide to reside here. And I just don't want it to feel like it's being perceived possibly, or one thinks that people may just come here for that. But with that, you know, I don't want to limit somebody who's got a family home that's at a different level and just because they become widowed or disabled veteran that they should have to pay the extra difference because they chose to stay in their more affordable luxurious house. Again, did not choose to lose their life or limbs as a result of serving their country. So I'm concerned about putting that cap. I don't know. But we are a transient town, and we could have veterans move in from all over, and that should be something that we embrace and accept. So with that, you know, I'm in support of this, but I do think we need to look at all of it. And again, it's a small percent of people right now. But with everything going on in our country and, you know, people, you know, it doesn't have to be... I have a question. So does this delineate if a current active duty member is injured and disabled and they're not at war? That's one of my questions.
This referral that's on the table is for widows whose husbands were deemed one-hundred percent permanent and total disabled at the time of their death.
Right, so they could have been injured while working on a submarine, but not actually at war?
It doesn't have anything to do with at war or not at war. It's just if the Veterans Administration issues an award letter that says this veteran was one-hundred percent permanent in total at the time of their death.
Got it. Okay, yeah, and so I think that's very important as we're seeing mental health with our veterans as well that are getting one-hundred percent permanently disabled due to, you know, some of the conflicts that they've been a part of. And so I just think this is great. I think it's important, and I think that the widows should be supported. So absolutely, thank you.
Counselor Pacino.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. She... Counselor Bordalyn, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pacino.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate, we are not talking about caps tonight. We're just adding these six widows to the other eighty so we can have one larger group that we can talk about and maybe talk cap some other day. But today, we're just adding these six widows.
Correct. And one consideration to make is the statute lets you pick a beginning date from what date of the widow's, you know, spouse passing to October 1st of '24. And we have a widow of a veteran who's one-hundred percent PNT veteran died in April of 1963.
Why wasn't she on it before?
She's getting veteran widow benefits, but not this benefit.
Understood.
Because it's a new rule.
Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, I'm gonna take my turn. Just a couple of clarifying questions. So any... With this new state law, anyone who could become a surviving spouse after October 1st, 2024, they are automatically included in this? Or is that... Is that... Am I understanding that correctly? Yes, when the... When Public Act 2446 was adopted last year, it was effective October 1st of 2025. If you are one-hundred percent disabled permanently and totally, then you receive the full dwelling exemption. And if that spouse dies who's permanently and totally disabled, their surviving spouse automatically gets this, correct? So we are simply bringing in six people who lost their spouse prior to this date? We're including them? Okay. Correct. Is there any qualifier if this person gets remarried? As long as they remain a widow, they receive the benefit. If they remarry, the benefit is removed. Okay, thank you. I am one-hundred percent behind this. I think we owe our veterans, and for full disclosure, my husband's a veteran, but we owe our veterans, especially those who have been injured, more than we can ever repay. So we owe their families just as much. So this is six people, and I can't qualify based on when their spouse died to say yes or no. It is from today on, or we can retro it? Like, what is the request? Yeah, the way the statute's written, this exemption goes into effect for the 10-125 grant list. So that's the first time we can place it on the grant list. Thank you. For me, this is a definite yes. Thank you.
Point of clarification?
Yes, your point or your question?
Yes. I guess I could ask, some states consider people who have cohabitated for an extended period of time as being legally married. Is this going to be, like, legally married with a actual marriage license? Or how would that work?
The statutes don't specify. But it does say as long as the widow remains a widow. In other words, doesn't remarry. So for clarification, does the state of Connecticut have a common law marriage law? I don't know of that.
I don't think so.
Okay, so...
Point of clarification?
Do your question?
To my understanding, I believe Connecticut does. So that's my question. I'd love to have that teased out. That's not included in here. And also, my other point of clarification is we obviously legal same-sex marriage, so I want to make sure that this is not excluding and is including anybody in same-sex marriages as well.
Mr. Burke.
Connecticut does not recognize common law marriage. However, if you move from a state that does, then it applies.
Okay, and same-sex marriage is legal in Connecticut, therefore it would apply, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anybody else who has not had a turn or two? Okay. So all those in favor of this? Say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Counselor Bordalyn, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote. You're muted. Counselor Bordalyn, you're muted.
No, I voted.
How did you vote, please?
I just voted in favor.
Okay, thank you. So that motion passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you. We'll take a very short recess while I go grab the mayor.
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five.
It is seven twenty-five. Coming right back in from recess. I didn't know. Okay, it is seven twenty-six. We're back. All right, on to the next item. Two zero two five dash six three five dash one, bond ordinance for design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields. This is in our packet on page fifty-eight. We had a public hearing this evening. And Counselor Russ, would you like to take that one?
Yes, ma'am, mayor. Item two zero two five dash six three five, bond ordinance for designing and construction of Groton Athletic Fields. Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the ordinance appropriating fourteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the design and construction of Groton Athletic Fields consisting of athletic field improvements primarily at Fitch High School. And if funds are remaining from said appropriation, allow such funds to be used at Sutton Park, Groton Middle School, and the former Claude Chester Elementary School, and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation.
Second, Pacino.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Pacino.
Oh, and to recommend... May I?
Yes.
Sorry, it's on two pages. And to recommend the ordinance to the representative town meeting per Rule 6.5.3.
Yes.
I continue the second.
Thank you. All right, before we get into full discussion, I'd like to make the amended motion to add the changes that were sent to us to include this section that says primarily at Fitch High School. And if funds are remaining from said appropriation, allow such funds to be used at... I would like to add that also into Section One.
Point of information?
Yes.
So my question is, didn't Counsel Russ read that first portion? We just need to add the second portion. She just read that.
The new motion.
I read this. Did not read this.
Yes, but I'm adding, I'm changing it to this because that's not what was produced in the public hearings. And on the original, what we had originally creamed up with originally on subsequent pages. So I'm amending it. Is that correct, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
So, Madam Mayor, would you like me to read the original one then? Because I read this one.
Counselor Russ read from this, Mr. Burke.
I didn't hear you say the primarily part.
She did.
Okay, then yes, you would amend Section One to include that extra verbiage.
So because she read this one, I would just add... Okay, thank you. Then I make the amended motion. Thank you, Counselor Parker, for catching that. I would make the amended motion to add that same verbiage into Section One. Second. So it's amended by Franco, seconded by Parker. Add additional verbiage into Section One.
Just a point of clarification.
Your question.
I don't know Robert's rules, but shouldn't we have read this initially and then revised it and not started with it?
You don't have to. You can read it... You can read the motion. That is not verbatim that we have to put it into the motion that way. Am I correct, Mr. Burke?
Yeah, it's a recommended motion that we put in the packet.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so now we're going to open up some comments. Does anybody have anything they would like to comment on this? Counselor McBride.
I'll just say I'm in support of the motion. I think it provides clarity to what this council moved forward with to have the priority be Fitch Middle School and the others thereafter. So I'm in support of it, thank you.
Fitch Middle School? Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Merritt.
Yes, I'm in support of this. It's been long overdue, and I think it's time to quit kicking the can down the road and go forward.
Thank you. Counselor Bordalyn.
Thanks. So just to be clear, this would only do a portion of the high school in Phase One?
This is what we've been talking about in Phase One, yes. For the fourteen million, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, yes.
So it wouldn't fix all of the projected initial things that were requested? Is that correct?
No, that would be, I think, close to sixty million dollars now. This is just for this Phase One, thank you.
Right, so the whole high school is not fully being the priority as an entirety? I just want to make sure of that.
Do you have anything else you would like to share, Counselor Bordalyn?
Yeah, a question for you through the town manager. So this is just doing what sections of the sports fields?
This is the athletic field, the bleachers, the general field next to the football field, the concession area.
Not bathrooms.
The concession area includes bathrooms.
So, but the other fields are going to be on hold? I guess, I mean, this is a...
That's what we had passed, yes.
Yeah, consensus of the council. But for me, my heart was to get all of Fitch done. And this voted phased-in thing doesn't mean each year it's going to win the vote, so we will have half-done things. So I'm concerned about that. But I will support it because it's something, and it's long overdue.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Counselor, good.
I'm in full support of this. I've talked to many community members who are also in full support of this. Very excited to see this happen to the high school fields. Thank you.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you, just a question. I'm assuming when this goes out to the public, the phased approach will be mentioned so people are aware that the bigger picture is there's more than just this one phase?
Definitely the... All of the summary information with the actual... I don't know if it'd be in the referendum language or not, but that'll be up to the council later. The council will set that referendum language that will go out.
Okay, so we can... I'm just thinking, when we do the referendum language, maybe to consider mentioning Phase One for some people to know. But I'm in favor of it as it is, thank you.
All right. Well, I am absolutely in favor of it. I'm very excited about this, and I'm excited that we are finally here after all this time. So we will take a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bordalyn.
Yeah, I just wanted to say as well that I do agree that we need to be very clear in the write-up of what it's covering so that people understand that whatever referendum goes out does not protect from all of it being done. It's just this one section, and it should be delineated exactly what is going to be done roughly so that people are clear. But again, happy that this is moving forward. Something that I got involved with over, I don't even know, six years ago perhaps. And some people organically came forward and were concerned. And we do have a lot of ABA compliance up there. So, and health concerns as far as the safety and well-being. So I do think this is so overdue. It's shocking that it's still sitting. But again, I think it's going to be, the details are going to be the most important as to what this is looking like and what it means for the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will happily now take a vote from this council on two zero two five dash six... No, I'm sorry, two zero two five dash six three five dash one, the bond ordinance for design and construction of the Groton Athletic Fields. All those in favor? Aye.
Madam Mayor, you have to mention that you're doing it with the amendment.
That's right, the amendment. All right, so I'm sorry, we're going to take a vote on the amended. Thank you for catching that. We're going to take a vote on the amended motion put on to add the additional verbiage into Section One that was read in the original motion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Counselor Bordalyn, I didn't hear your vote.
I'm in support.
Thank you. That passes seven to one to zero with Parker opposed. All right, now we will take a vote on the full motion with the amendment on two zero two five dash six three five dash one, bond ordinance for design and construction of the Groton Athletic Fields as amended. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? That passes seven to one to zero with Parker opposed. All right, up next is two zero two five dash six eight three, the National Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. This is going to be on page sixty-one of our packet. Mr. Burke, oh, wait a minute, I'm going to have it put on the floor. Counselor Merritt, would you like to take that one? It's on page sixty-one.
Two zero two five six eight three, National Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. Motion to recommend a resolution to authorize the town of Groton to become a participating subdivision in the opioid manufacturer settlements.
Second. Moved by Merritt, seconded by Russ. Now, Mr. Burke, would you like to give us a synopsis on this?
Sure. As the council is aware, the town had participated in earlier opioid settlements. Through what we're expecting through the end of this month, the town's collected, anticipated about four hundred and fifty thousand total, the bulk of which has already been awarded out. But we are going to have a discussion for some unallocated funds... But we are going to have a discussion for some unallocated funds at our August 12th count. That'll be upcoming, but, so it's been a significant amount of money that we've received through that first phase of settlements. There's a new round of national opioid manufacturing settlements, and you have to, again, opt in to participate and receive the funding as we did, same thing we did the first time. So we're just looking for approval to opt in and be able to receive revenue. And there's no indication yet what kind of funds can be available with this.
Council Bordelain?
Uh, thank you. For me, it's a no-brainer. I think it's a great option to opt in. I do hope, though, that we get ample notice to make sure that we can allow the community to know and cast our net wide to offer it to folks to apply and come up with that process, I guess, through the mayor, through the town manager. When will we have to kind of bring it forward to the council if we chose to kind of come up with a application process?
Well, it's going to be on the, it's anticipated to be on the August 12th agenda to discuss how you want to proceed with. We're going to look at three separate items, cannabis funds, cannabis tax, opioid funds, and then miniature liquor bottles, NIPS funds. So we're going to talk about three different things for unallocated funds.
Thank you. I'd also like to say that the motion on the floor is actually about the manufact, this opioid manufacturer settlement, so distribution and other accounts we really shouldn't be discussing, because that would be a FOIA violation, I believe.
Sorry.
That's quite all right.
Just asking about general-
Council Bordelain, so if we could keep the topic on hand, thank you.
Yeah, good, thank you. So these manufacturers, this current opioid settlement, what are the, what are the, what things can these funds, if we opt in, be used for?
Hold on one minute.
Because I think that's important to know, when, you know, as we look for these funds, when looking out about casting the net widely.
Give me a little moment, my fingers close enough. I don't believe there's, unless you recall, otherwise, I'm not sure there are any particular requirements on this, but we'll have that for, that'd be the same as round one, but we'll have that for the August 12th meeting.
That'd be great, because some of the reading that I was doing, and I tried to research these particular manufacturers and this opioid, opioid settlement, and looked at different places that have opted into different settlements, and some things can be used for playing fields and things like that, as well as, you know, on-the-ground emergency response, you know, for addiction as well. But some of the stuff I was reading when I was looking at this settlement or something like it, and I was trying to get clarity on, you know, one of the things was prevention to drugs, which, you know, having accessible, you know, things for youth to do was part of one of them, so I was unclear. So I'd love to have that all presented when we can. Thank you.
Mr. Burt?
I stand corrected against myself. Looking at back in '22 at some of the documents for settlement, now, it doesn't mean that everything's going to stay the same for the next round, but the first round has set at least 70% of the funds to be used for future, future opioid remediation efforts. And then if you spend the rest on other things, then you just have to report what you're spending on.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying that. So that, that leaves the remaining open to other programs or things to help. So, yeah, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer, accepting and opting in, and it doesn't cost us anything, or there's no anything else but just saying yes, pretty much. Is that correct, Town Manager, through the mayor?
Yes, that's, as far as we're, I'm aware at this point, that's, this is the process we did the first round.
Yeah, so I think that's great, and with these funds, it'd be great to see where we, how we delineated out after. Thank you.
Okay, and my seeing in other hands, I think this is something we absolutely should sign on to, as we have in the past, and we have received a plethora of opioid settlement money in the past due to, I believe it's the amount of prescriptions that were doled out within our community, and it was a very large sum. So this will definitely help our community in some recovery phases, so that would be awesome, if we can get that kind of settlement money again. All right, we'll take a vote on 2025-683, National Opioid Manufacturer Settlement. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Parker, seconded by Bordelain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. We're abstained at 7:42 PM.